Good morning, everyone. I would like to call to order the regular board meeting of Tuesday, April 8th, 2025. As is our custom, we begin our board meetings with the singing of our national anthem. We're very honoured today to have a pre-recorded video of students from David Thompson School singing "O Canada". I would ask everyone to please stand and follow the lead of the students.
(Singing) O Canada, our own native land. Truth and love in all of us common. God on God, say, "Oh, dear". He will say, "Oh, dear". The time is far, the truth is for real. They're moving on their stride. God keep our land glorious and free. O Canada, we stand on God's holy feet. O Canada, we stand on God's holy feet.
The Calgary Board of Education acknowledges the traditional territories and oral practices of the Treaty Seven nations, including the Tsuketsepete, comprised of the Tsuksega, the Gayna, the Begoni, and the Amskapa-Begoni nations. We acknowledge the Sutena Nation and the Ayarhe Nakota, comprised of the Chiniqui, Berispa, and Good Stony nations, the Métis Nation within Alberta, and all people who make their homes in the Treaty Seven region of southern Alberta. This land on which we gather is traditionally known as Maginsetis, Guisé, Winchispa, and Otusquene. As a learning organisation, we are committed to advancing the truth and reconciliation calls to action focused on education for reconcili action. Okie, Daranastare, Ambawastich, Tonsé, Tonishi, bonjour, hello, and welcome to all of our staff and public in attendance at this meeting, including trustee Dennis, who is joining us virtually today. Representing our stakeholder groups, I would like to recognise, from the Senior High School Principals' Association, Eileen Smith. Our first item of business is to approve the agenda for today's meeting. Ms Myner, do you have any changes that need to be noted?
Madam Chair, there are no agenda changes to be noted for today's meeting.
Thank you. Could I have a motion that the agenda be approved as submitted? Thank you, trustee Close. Those in favour of the motion? Trustee Dennis? Trustee Dennis? We couldn't hear you? Maybe a thumbs up? Oh, there you go.
I'm voting in favour.
Thank you very much. That is carried unanimously. Our next business deals with results focus. Today, on our agenda, is the annual monitoring of results for personal development. Chief Superintendent Pittman, would you please introduce the report?
Morning, Chair Bolger and trustees. We're pleased today to be sharing the 2023-2024 Monitoring Report for Results for Personal Development. This report outlines our results as an organisation in ensuring that in and through their learning programme, every individual learner in the Calgary Board of Education will both identify and actively develop their individual gifts, talents, and interests. There are several areas for celebration to highlight from this report. First, the annual returning rate for the Calgary Board of Education reached 18.9%, surpassing the Alberta average for the very first time, in fact, in five years. This marks the largest gap between CBE and provincial results during that period, with a positive differential of 2.3 percentage points. Our Division Three students also continue to demonstrate engagement, persistence, and goal-setting skills. Report card measures for engages in learning with confidence and persistence and sets and works toward learning goals remained high at 96.9% and 97.1%, respectively. In addition, student success in the health and com or career and life management programmes remains strong, and overall success in these areas reached 98%, an increase over last year. Division Four students, in particular, saw improvement, with a 0.6 percentage point rise in the com programme results, bringing it to 93.1%. And while strong results are certainly a testament to the resilience, focus, and commitment of our students, staff, and families, they don't lend themselves easily to identify areas for improvement. That said, maintaining results at this level remains a priority, and we'll continue to do so by keeping our collective focus on student wellbeing through the actions identified in our education plan. At this time, I'll turn it over to Superintendent of School Improvement, Mike Nelson, to share further context for this report.
Thank you, Chief Superintendent Pittman. Before we look more closely at some of the areas for celebration, it's important to provide some context. This report includes evidence from 18 indicators informing six outcomes: one Alberta Education Assurance Measure, three report card measures, and 14 measures connected to the CBE Student Survey. For two of the three report card indicators, it should be noted that only data for students in grades seven to nine is included, as report card results reporting was suspended for kindergarten to grade six students for the 2023-2024 school year. For the remaining report card indicator, new curriculum for physical education and wellness introduced in 22-23 for Division One and Two students was accompanied by a change in the report card stems. As a result, while we can compare results for Division One, Division Two, and all student cohorts to the previous year's results, we caution against looking at those results in terms of a multi-year trend. And finally, as results for was a minor focus in the 2023-2024 CB Student Survey, the questions that informed 12 of the 14 summary measures were not asked. However, enduring questions informing two of the summary measures were included in the survey questions asked or included in the report card, excuse me, the report before you. With that in mind, when we look specifically at the summary measures for physical and emotional health from the CB Student Survey, there is much to celebrate. To begin, the physical health summary measure has shown steady progress since 2021-22, an increase of 1.5 percentage points over the previous year's results to 67.5%. Most of the questions within the physical health measure saw gains, including students reporting they take care of themselves by exercising regularly and getting enough sleep when they can. Students reported to take care of themselves by eating healthy snacks and did see a 0.4 percentage point drop compared to previous years. However, this overall measure remains higher at 74.1% overall. One area where we continue to see progress and growth is in the percentage of students reporting they take care of themselves by managing their screen time. Results for this measure has continued to improve over the past three years and saw its highest level of agreement in the 2023-2024 school year. However, student agreement in this area continues to remain relatively low at 45.5%. As with physical health, emotional health measures also saw year-over-year growth, with a 2.2 percentage point increase from the previous year of 67.9%. This also represents the highest level of agreement in post-pandemic years. Student engagement level and asking for help and using strategies when they feel stressed about school were strongest for this measure. However, the lowest agreement remains around sharing feelings, especially among middle school learners. These students may be seeking more independence, feeling uncertain emotionally, or fearing judgement, which can often make expressing their feelings more challenging. Addressing these areas for growth remains a key priority for the CBE. We continue to make significant investments in professional learning to build staff capacity and enhance student personal development. Key initiatives include the delivery of developmentally appropriate social-emotional learning resources for middle school learners, evidence-based practices in physical education and health, and supporting school-based wellbeing actions and plans, excuse me, action plans through data-driven strategies. To support these efforts, system leaders continue to develop resources, including a centralised wellbeing insight page and social-emotional learning tools. We collaborate with external agencies to provide meaningful learning experiences for both staff and students, and continue to implement structures and policies, such as the Student Wellbeing Symposiums, the holistic transition plans for Indigenous students, and the CB Personal Mobile Device Policy in alignment with Alberta education requirements. And while these are a few examples of ways we are targeting initiatives towards areas for growth, it is important to note that the overall improvements in both physical and emotional health reflects the positive impacts of significant work that has been, excuse me, that has been taking place over the past few years, like the Student Wellbeing Framework and Companion Guide, the Indigenous Holistic Lifelong Learning Framework, the continued implementation of collaborative response at the school level, and the clarity of focus on student success, such as belonging and wellbeing in our education plan. Chair Bolger and trustees, at this time, we welcome your questions related to the 2023-24 Monitoring Report for Results for Personal Development.
Thank you very much, Superintendent Nelson. Trustees have received and reviewed the Chief Superintendent's report regarding the annual monitoring of results for personal development for the 2023-24 school year. It is now the board's responsibility to consider the report as evidence of reasonable organisational progress in this results area. I now invite trustees who have any questions about this monitoring report to offer them to the Chief Superintendent. I encourage you to limit your questions to those that will assist the board to make decision regarding whether reasonable progress has been made to the ultimate achievement of this results policy. I remind trustees that the emphasis for monitoring results is not on compliance, but rather on reasonable progress. Are there any questions? Trustee Close?
Thank you. On page 27 of 38, in reference to com, it mentions innovative ways in which schools are offering the courses and supporting student agency and choice. I'm just wondering if you could provide further examples of how that delivery has changed?
Thank you. Through the chair. As you know, com is a three-credit course for grade 10 through 12, which addresses concepts of assessing your own wellbeing, ability to cope with challenges, and overcome obstacles within your personal abilities. So a few variations on how com curriculum is delivered within the CBE includes integrating com into physical education, so PE20, a three-credit course, is offered for both PhysEd and com. At the same time, there also is offerings of com every Friday throughout the year, and so students could choose that if it fits their schedule best. We offer programmes for com online, both at the school level and through CBE Learn. We have also been able to provide very successfully a summer delivery of com, and students can take that over the course of their summer, allowing them to provide a variety of other options and choices during the school year. And there's a variety of other tools that we also use to help facilitate aspects of com, and that can include My Blueprint, Enriched Academy, and partnerships with EverActive. And so that's a variety of ways in which we're innovating the way in which students can meet those learning outcomes. Thank you.
Thank you. We have trustee May and then trustee Dennis online after that.
Thank you. I really appreciate, on page 3 of 38, it talks about context indicators, and specifically, it talks about the 10,704 students we process through the Welcome Centre. I'm just wondering, how do we support newcomer families to our system, and what do we provide them for connections, for services, and supports?
Through the chair. So the CBE's Welcome Centre is the initial point of contact for all our non-Canadian families new to the country, and supports for new students and families include admissions, student language proficiency assessment, and connection with community partners, such as the Calgary Bridge Foundation and the Youth Settlement Services. So besides helping families navigate grade placement and school placement and transportation, our partners at CBFOI Connect Team are onsite at the Welcome Centre and meet with each family during the registration appointment to offer settlement services and access to community supports. So additionally, staff, settlement workers, and schools are also embedded in our schools within each quadrant of the city, and families can continue to access these supports while they have temporary residence in Alberta. An education matters grant for the Welcome Centre is also in place to support our newcomer families, so they provide sometimes grocery gift cards, winter clothing and boots, school bag, school backpacks, and even calculators have been available to students and families. So I'd share with you, our Welcome Centre is a place where families are welcome to the CBE and our larger Calgary community.
Thank you. Trustee Dennis, go ahead.
Thank you so much, Chair Bolger. Can you confirm that you can hear me?
We can.
Perfect. Thank you so much. Appreciate Superintendent Nelson's opening remarks on this report, and in particular, around the screen time. The results related to screen time did show the most improvement in the 23-24 school year, and I know that trustees, including myself, have had a number of questions related to this outcome in previous years. And so I'm wondering, I guess first, can you provide any additional context in terms of why we think we're improving in this area? But also wondering about moving forward in terms of the question that we ask, or questions that we ask related to the healthy use of screen time. I'm wondering if we might consider asking different questions or asking them in a different way in response to the provincial restrictions that have been put in place regarding cellphone use in schools, which we know came into effect for the 24-25 school year? Or is there value really in just keeping things the same to determine whether or not the provincial initiative has caused our students to be more discerning about their screen time or possibly changing their habits?
Through the chair. So just to give a little bit of background, so currently, the question in the CB Student Survey that students respond to is, "I take care of myself by making sure I don't have too much screen time. Examples are TV, computer, tablet, and cellphone." This question addresses a number of different screen time options in students' perception on their ability to manage the time for their physical health. A change to this particular question could impact year-over-year comparison for results for and would likely need to be included as part of a review of results for. It is possible to add an additional question to the CB Student Survey, specifically to cellphone use in schools in order to learn more about the impact on learners of CB's Personal Mobile Device Policy, which is based on, of course, the provincial requirements. So keeping the two questions separate would be potentially important, as the one question is related more to wellbeing and the other to the impact of policy on learning perceptions of learning. We would not be able to implement this change, however, until the administration of the 2025-2026 survey, meaning that the initial baseline results would not be available until the 2025-2026 school year. So the other part of your question was, we believe that we're seeing improvements with the policies that we've implemented, but of course, they're not represented in this dataset. And other reasons why students are making changes about their screen time, I think there's lots of research out there, and I think if you're like me, many parents are having constant conversations with their children about screen time and their appropriate use.
Thank you. Trustee Hat, go ahead.
I know that results for was a minor focus in the survey questions that were collected in the school year that we were monitoring. Can you just remind me when it will be a major focus to include the expanded questions?
Through the chair. Just give me one minute, and I'll give you that exact. Two years from now. Thank you.
Additional questions from trustees? Trustee Bukidinovich?
My question is around looking for reassurance that the evidence we are gathering is meaningful when we're trying to determine if we're meeting our goals for personal development. How do I know as a trustee that we are measuring the right things in the right way to determine whether we are nurturing the personal development of our students?
Through the chair. The board approves policy, reasonable interpretations, and indicators, and the indicators are specifically what is identified as measures. And so it is through the board's process that the determination of evidence being used in that collaborative process between administration and the board, that information would be brought forward, and then the indicators utilized. So should the board seek other measures or other indicators, then that would be the follow-up process to that. I would highlight that within the context of all results policies, but specifically, personal development is a great example. There are also other administrative regulations as well that would influence how it is we continue to operate. But evidence is approved by the board, and that is part of that process relative to the policy development.
Trustee May, go ahead.
Thank you. My question's on the annual returning rates. I think I have a couple of questions here. I'm wondering, how does this data inform or affect our completion and graduation rates? I'm wondering if they're kind of connected. I'm wondering, is there significant system work in order for these students to return? And are they typically returning to a regular high school? Or do they go to Chinook Learning Services, CBE Learn, Discovering Choices, United Pathways? Just kind of wondering how they come back.
Thank you. Through the chair. And so the initial age-specific cohort for students in CBE consists of students aged 14 to 18 who are enrolled in CBE and who are receiving funding on September 30th of any given school year. A student is then considered to have dropped out if there is no record of their participation in Alberta learning system during the following school year. However, if a student is to return to school, to an age-specific cohort, they are considered to have, who are considered to have dropped out, then they, and they return to the system the next school year, they're returned. They are considered to be a returning student. And so, having taken a course in high school, had received a diploma, a certificate of completion, attendance at post-secondary, those things, anywhere in Alberta, they would be back within our cohort. If a student has or goes on to complete high school, then they're part of the age, the year three, year four, or year five cohort that we track in terms of completion rate. And higher returning rates would suggest a greater opportunity for high school completion for these young people. For the 2023-2024 school year, 80% of students returned to participation in a K-12 programme, reflecting 18% referring to returning to post-secondary and 2% registered in an apprenticeship programme. The returning rate is an Alberta Education Assurance Measure and does not identify specifically if a student who was a part of a CBE cohort is returning to a CBE school, nor does it take into account students who may have dropped out of other jurisdictions as part of their return came and returned to CBE school. To the second part of your question, if students are looking to return to school, they can visit their high school guidance counsellor for additional information as the best way to engage in their programming. And counsellors can help them understand if they're returned to a regular CBE school, CBE Learn, Discovering Choices, Chinook Learning. There's a whole variety of options in order to be able to receive that student to make sure they're on the best path in order to meet their learning and educational goals. And so, lastly, guidance counsellors track students who have stopped attending school and follow them up to make sure that we are understanding the next best steps for that student. Students can also visit our corporate site and page to find a contact to be able to help them reengage and return back to their schooling portfolio. Thank you.
Follow-up, trustee May?
Yes, thank you for the follow-ups. I'm guessing what I'm hearing too is it almost sounds like this kind of ties into our attendance work and our attendance team to kind of keep the students in school. So I'm guessing that there is, again, work to even just retain those students within the system. So I think so there's lots to do to kind of keep them in school.
Thank you. Through the chair. Much work is being done with each school and a central attendance team to ensure that we're tracking every student who is not fully engaged in their school and in their learning journey, to make sure that there are many conversations along the way to find a path to ensure that they have opportunities to continue with their learning. Thank you.
Through the chair, if I can just add, because I would be remiss not to highlight, "Finish school your way" on the CBE corporate website, which is a really simple document that often individuals coming back into Calgary may need to look at to see the multiple ways in which they can complete high school, and then it builds further to Superintendent Turner's comments around connection to each of our schools. That is a centralised document that supports alongside many others to show the multiple pathways so that students ultimately can achieve high school graduation.
Trustees, any additional questions on this report? Any trustees who wish to bring forward a motion regarding exception or commendation should provide the motions to the Corporate Secretary and to all trustees by noon Thursday, April 17th, 2025. This item will be placed on the April 22nd, 2025 agenda for the board's consideration. Next on our agenda is the annual monitoring of operational expectations II, Learning Environment Treatment of Students. Chief Superintendent Pittman, would you please introduce the report?
Chair Bolger and trustees, pleased to present the Monitoring Report for OE II: Learning Environment Treatment of Students today. This report confirms compliance with all seven indicators for the 2023-24 school year, reflecting CBE's ongoing commitment and work towards a safe, caring, and effective learning environment. Key highlights include progress in student voice, safety and wellbeing, alongside efforts to support our increasingly diverse student population. One example from the report shared is that, as part of a system-wide review of the Student Code of Conduct, principals ensured that students, staff, and families were informed of expectations, while school leaders received professional learning on progressive discipline and restorative practices. Schools also continue to foster inclusive environments through student-led clubs, contributing to a strong sense of belonging. Of course, trustees most recently would have had exposure to our Student Wellbeing Symposium, which would be direct reflections of this. However, in the context of this last reporting period, from student councils and leadership groups to GSAs and QSA's, our schools continue to empower students to take an active role in shaping their school environments. This focus on safe and caring schools was reflected in the 2024 Alberta Education Assurance Survey results, with 78.8% of the 29,000 students and nearly 85,000 of the overall 40,000 parent, teacher, and student respondents agreeing that schools are safe and students are treated fairly. In meeting the diverse needs of our learners, one way we continued to support all students was through robust attendance processes. The CBE attendance team consulted on over 650 cases, directly supporting 120 students, 27% of whom showed notable attendance improvements. Ongoing targeted interventions are continuing to show encouraging results, especially with students who are supported over multiple years. It's not simply an annual body of work. Finally, the report highlights transition supports for students with individual program plans and holistic transition plans for Indigenous learners, reaffirming our commitment to ensuring that all students are known and supported as they move between grades and schools. At this time, we welcome any questions you may have.
Thank you. The operational expectations policies define the degree of authority transferred to the Chief Superintendent as she makes day-to-day decisions. The Board of Trustees has previously reviewed the reasonable interpretation of this operational expectation and approved that the Chief Superintendent reasonably understands the values underlying this policy and that the indicators previously provided by the Chief Superintendent are acceptable to the board. I now invite any trustee who has questions about the report to offer them to the Chief Superintendent. Let me remind the board that the purpose of considering this report is to satisfy the board that its policy values were complied with during the 2023-24 school year. I encourage trustees to limit their questions and comments in support of monitoring. Any questions? Trustee Bukidinovich?
What is the CBE's operational expectation about the treatment of students who experience acute dysregulation? And what is the CBE's operational expectation about the learning environment of students who have one or more classmates or peers who experience acute dysregulation?
Through the chair. And so administration in response to operational expectations for students with... And so administration in response to operational expectations for students with behavioral challenges and dysregulation are guided by administrative regulations, often referred to as ARs. And so ARs set out the rules, the expectations, and the guidelines to support and align the operation of the organization. They assist in identifying boundaries, parameters, and guides that inform action for decision-making. Examples of ARs that address student code of conduct and student behavior include the AR around welcoming, caring, respectful, and safe learning and working environments, a student and staff code of conduct, progressive discipline policy, suspension and expulsion policies. In addition to these administrative regulations, administration also looks to Alberta Education's Continuum of Supports and Services Guide. This provides a clear framework for promotion of positive behavior and offers an intervention framework for responding to diverse student need. This includes escalating behavior, ensuring that schools can offer both preventative and responsive strategies to support student success. This aligns with our CBE approach to prioritize proactive measures and to offer individualized supports to foster positive classroom environments. With respect to operational expectations for the learning environment of classmates who experience, students as you've described, with acute dysregulation, operational expectations emphasize the importance of creating a supportive, inclusive learning environment where educators are equipped with strategies and the continuum of supports and services that are offered here at the Calgary Board of Education to respond effectively to such behaviors, ensuring that all students in the classroom feel safe, respected, and able to focus on their learning. Thank you.
Through the chair, I just also want to make the point, operational expectations are defined by the board. And so through that process, that is the determination of other elements. What Superintendent Turner has outlined relates to the administrative regulations that then are aligned to board policy. So I think that's an important, the CBE would not create operational expectations as administration, separate and apart from the board, in terms of that use of that language. Administrative regulations will guide alongside other protocols, also guided as Superintendent referenced by Alberta Education. So I just want to make sure that that's really clear, that we don't, administration does not create their own operational expectations.
Thank you for that. We have trustee Dennis online.
Thank you so much, chair. So my question is regarding fire drills and lockdown drills. And so the likelihood, of course, of having an actual fire or a need for a lockdown is quite rare in the system, but would agree that it's a good thing that we prepare our staff and students for this should that be necessary. And so regarding indicator 2.1.2, I took a quick read of Administrative Regulation 3021. And if I understand that correctly, all fire and lockdown drills are conducted with a police or fire professional present. But I also noted in AR 3021 that we, it mentions external, sorry, it mentions, I guess, having to evacuate to an alternate site. And so I'm just wondering, the logistics of that are going to be quite different than, you know, evacuating the school, meeting at a specific point for a fire drill, or, you know, lockdown and the processes that are in place, whether it's an external or an internal lockdown. But I'm wondering about having to evacuate to an alternate site and whether or not that is something that we practice from time to time in our schools? And if so, what external professionals might support us in this, understanding that the logistics of having to evacuate and move to another site in the case of an emergency would be quite different than, you know, a fire drill or a lockdown?
Through the chair. For AR 3021, I just want to highlight that yes, most certainly Calgary Police Services do have representation as part of the lockdown drills and help support school administration and provide recommendation following those. Whereas with the Calgary Fire Department, that's still a work in progress. So it's certainly an objective for them to be able to be present at at least one of the six fire drills. But at this time, that's not necessarily still in place in a regular fashion. But we're working with the Calgary Fire Department to get to that place. As far as evacuations to an alternate site, and I think you touched on that a little bit, trustee Dennis, in terms of the magnitude of something like that, it is not something that is exercised in an actual fact, because you can just imagine having 143,000 students having to be crossing roads and moving to an alternate site and sort of the overall risk that that would create versus the risk that we're trying to mitigate. And here, how we look to mitigate the risk in terms of having to evacuate students is that instead, we ensure that school administration meet with their staff and that their staff are aware of what the alternate site is, what that path would be. And then those adults with the students would be the ones who would be guiding the students and being able to support them through that. We also, of course, conduct those kinds of things from an exercise perspective, so again, without students, through the Central Emergency Response and Preparedness Committee that the Calgary Board of Education has. But again, there are no actual physical exercising of movement to an evacuation site of students.
Thank you, Superintendent Breton. Trustee May.
Thank you. A follow-up to that. I think during the COVID years, we were non-compliant with this, and I think there was a multitude of factors. So I'm just wondering, was there new systems or changes in place to ensure that we were in compliance for this year?
Through the chair. So a number of steps effectively were put in place when we suddenly found that our schools were having greater difficulty attaining the objectives laid out within your operational expectation. And those measures include having schools pre-schedule both their lockdown and fire drills with their area offices. And so right at the start of the year, that calendar has already played out and laid out, I should say. And so that helps ensure that the minimum requirements are met. Additionally, regular communications are provided to schools to remind them of the obligation through such communications as the week ahead that we have, or system leadership meetings occasionally might be subject of an update, depending again on the circumstances, but again, to remind everyone of that requirement. And then finally, progress reports on completion are provided on approximately a monthly basis to the area offices, again, so that they can then see how their schools are meeting that obligation.
Trustee Hack.
I have a question on page five of nine. It relates to 2.1.3. So percentage of students responding indicating agreement was safe and caring, suite of questions from the Alberta Education Accountability Pillar Survey, or the AEA now. I understand that there's the change. It says we're slightly down, so not more or less than 2%, which is what we're looking for. I'm just wondering if you can give me the percentages that we've had over the last three to five years? I note that this year's survey and then the previous years was indicated in there. And then possibly the number of parents, staff, students who took the surveys, see what's changed with them as well. Thank you.
Thank you. Through the chair. So regarding the total number of parents and students who have taken the AEA survey, the participant numbers were similar across most of the AEA survey measures, sorry. Looking specifically at safe and caring measures, around 5,000 parents and 27,000 students each year have participated in their survey across the five years. Generally speaking, there was no significant trend in numbers of responders over time, meaning ups and downs. However, it should be noted that to avoid fluctuations in number of respondents impacting the results, Alberta Ed adopts the Chi-square comparison, which is a statistic measure, to check whether the improvement measure is statistically significant. So in a large board like us, it could be 4,800 one year of parents, 5,200, but the statistical measure then measures the statistical significance.
Thank you. Follow-up, trustee Hack.
Sorry, and just the percent that had an agreeance. So at 84.8% this year, just going back a few years to see trends.
We're just confirming your numbers. And so based on a statistical comparison of the previous three-year averages, both parent and student cohort showed, you are correct, slightly lower amounts than that. And specifically over time, it was more apparent for that Division III area. And so when we look at that total amount, I'm just looking to see my colleagues if we have a percentage noted. No, so we don't have a percentage noted, but what we are able to see is that there is that slight year-over-year decline and more appearance specifically for that Division III. That is why when we look at the education plan, Division III and those middle school years are identified as areas of specific focus as we go forward.
Thank you. I have trustee Close and then trustee Bukedinovich.
Thank you. And I appreciate some of the answers to earlier questions about the administrative regulations and the approach of proactive measures, because it did catch my attention on page five of four, four of nine of the professional learning sessions in support of progressive student discipline and restorative practice. I'm not sure you have to unpack with examples unless you would like to. And it does sound to me like it's a whole-school approach, and I'm trying to get my head around that. But one of the reasons that caught my attention is that there has been recent national media more on survey results that were based back east about student behavior in classrooms and trends of behavior escalating. And so I'm just wondering, from our perspective, I'm assuming you track school suspensions or looking at that, or I'm also going to be assuming and like confirmation that that probably isn't our first course of action when we're trying to be proactive in addressing behavior. But if you could just comment on if it's our different approach to responding to student behavior, or if we're seeing something that is similar to what national media has disclosed?
Through the chair. And so, thank you. CBE has a whole variety of ways in which they do address student behavior, and this is through a number of administrative regulations, operational expectations, intervention practices. And so we did speak to some of those administrative examples previously, the welcoming, caring, respectful school environment, progressive discipline, student suspension, those kinds of things. In addition, it's really important to know that the intervention practices are guided by Alberta Education Continuum of Supports and Services. And at each local school level, our administration at the school level and at the system level consistently tracks key data. And those data include attendance, as we've just, you know, recently talked about, as well as suspension rates, reasons and rationale for those things, and looks for trends and themes to be able to address, better intervention to be able to support student behavior in a proactive preventative way, as well as when there are moments where there are greater signs of escalation and wrap around the continuum of supports to ensure that we're addressing those needs. Thank you.
Thank you. Trustee Bukedinovich.
On page six of nine, one of the operational expectations of the Board of Trustees is that each volunteer has security clearance prior to beginning their volunteer service. It appears that the OE2 document itself does not state that this has to be a security clearance with a vulnerable sector check specifically, yet on the CBE's website, it says that a vulnerable sector check is required. I'm wondering, is the vulnerable sector check a requirement of the Board of Trustees or of administration? And I'm wondering also why a vulnerable sector check is required for every single volunteer position. For example, why would somebody who is volunteering in the evening to be a secretary for their school council need a vulnerable sector check?
Through the chair. So there's been a bit of an evolution in OE2, I would say, where there was an explicit indicator in the past where the board required all volunteers and staff to have police information checks. In terms of the level of check, that is informed both by legislation and the role that the individual is playing in relation to students in school buildings or students in activities that are tied to school-based events. So there is the Criminal Records Act. It sets out when you can get a vulnerable sector check versus a police information check. So our practices align with that legislation, and it differentiates when individuals are engaging with or in spaces where students exist and roles that may work for organizations or interact with organizations where there's children present but not necessarily interact with them on a day-to-day basis. So some of that differentiation comes through law. I don't, I'm sorry, I lost the third question, and I believe that will be better answered by my colleague across the table.
Through the chair. And I think the other aspect of your question spoke to an individual who works in a school council and is supporting in a secretarial fashion, or is in the school council, just generally speaking. And for that, I would draw your attention to the Administrative Regulation 5003 that defines what a volunteer is, and it also defines what it is not. And somebody who is in a school council, the members of the school council, those are not considered to be volunteers. And so that provides that delineation. And so reflecting back on the comments from the general counsel, where we do have individuals who are looking to volunteer, and they could potentially be volunteering throughout the year in different roles, having that vulnerability check if they are going to be in close proximity and contact with students, then allows for that greater flexibility for that parent to be able to offer their time to their school.
Thank you. I'd like to ask a question about IPPs, or individual program plans, looking at page seven of nine. So it sounds like the CBE does an excellent job of ensuring that students with IPPs and their parents are well-transitioned when they're changing schools with the support of both principals and education directors through school visits, meeting staff and future teachers and new principals. And I would imagine that each meeting takes a considerable amount of time to prepare for and plan for, and then as well as having the meeting itself. So this demonstrates to me that this is a critical component to ensure students are well-supported when they are moving to new schools. So are you able to share a bit of information about this, like how approximately, how many students have IPPs within the system and how many are transitioning in any given school year? And are we able to effectively support these transitions with the staff we have in place?
Through the chair. And you are correct, there is a tremendous amount of work that goes into developing and implementing those IPPs and transitioning these students. And so all students in CBE within Alberta Education Special Education Code should have an individual program plan. Currently, we have almost 28,000 students that are identified within Special Education Code, resulting in IPPs to support learning strategies and accommodations that these students need. Natural transitions occur between elementary and junior high or middle school, and junior high or middle school and high school. This includes a thoughtful process between sending and receiving schools, and this includes both conversations with the school, the student, and the family. Transition meetings, school tours, and detailed support plans are all a part of that process involving all of those parties. And students in specialized classes in unique settings transitioning from programs into different programs are supported by a key contact strategist, that's somebody who works with the CBE and the Inclusive Education Specialist to support that student and their family and staff as the student works through the system. Currently, there are 2,243 students within Alberta Education Special Education Code transitioning between grade six and grade seven. We have an additional 2,442 students within Alberta Special Education Code transitioning from grade nine to 10. And so those support structures that you've And so those support structures that you've identified, as well as additional transition support student planning guides, are really fundamental ways in which we are supporting students through their IPP and as they transition through our system. Thank you.
Thank you for that, Superintendent Turner. Any other questions from trustees? All right, seeing none. And we now come to the point where trustees are asked to identify their intentions to bring forward any motions related to compliance with Operational Expectations II, Learning Environment Treatment of Students. Any trustees who wish to bring forward a motion regarding exception to finding the evidence to be compliant or a motion of commendation for exceptional performance in a particular area should provide the Corporate Secretary and all trustees with the proposed motions by noon Thursday, April seventeenth, 2025. If there are no exceptions or commendations, then this item will be placed on the consent agenda for the April twenty-second, 2025 board meeting. With the motion that the Board of Trustees approves that the Chief Superintendent is in compliance with the provisions of OE two, Learning Environment Treatment of Students. Next on our agenda is item five point two, the Annual Monitoring of Operational Expectation Six, Asset Protection. Chief Superintendent Pittman, would you please introduce the report?
Chair Boulder and trustees, we present the monitoring report for Operational Expectation Six, Asset Protection. And the data collected for this monitoring report, again, like all the other reports, applies to the 2023-2024 school year. And it includes data indicating that CBE is properly maintaining, adequately protecting and appropriately using all organization assets. The evidence presented today indicates compliance with all six indicators. And I would note that this is the first instance of reporting on the current indicator, six point one point three, which measures life safety and preventative maintenance inspections. These inspections include life safety equipment such as fire alarms and preventative maintenance, including regular boiler inspections. This revised indicator was approved on September twenty-seventh, 2022 to replace the previous indicator that measured performance on Alberta infrastructure audits, which no longer take place. Due to changes to government audit and reporting processes, that indicator was no longer applicable. And at this time, we're happy to answer any questions you may have.
Thank you. I invite any trustee who has questions about the report to offer them to the Chief Superintendent. Let me remind the board that the purpose of considering this report is to satisfy the board that its policy values were complied with during the 2023-24 school year. I encourage trustees to limit their questions and comments in support of monitoring. Trustee Bukidinovich.
On page five of eight, Operational Expectation six point one point two says that ninety-nine percent of all attempted intrusions into the CBE information systems will be successfully blocked. I'm wondering what measures this administration taking to reduce the risks posed by social engineering attacks and leader impersonation attempts?
Through the chair. So most aspects of technology, security are about layers. So you don't just do one thing, you do several things. So with regard to social engineering attacks, first, we have a fairly comprehensive awareness campaign. For those of you who have been on CBE devices, you'll know that there's a series of screensavers that walk through a lot of information around phishing attacks and how to protect yourself and what to look for and those kinds of things. So that's a fairly comprehensive one layer. Another layer is we have a system called Public School Works that allows us to deploy professional learning out to all of our staff. And we deploy professional learning out to all of our staff around safe use of technology, phishing, those kinds of things. And then, not in a public setting, but perhaps in a private setting, I could go into more detail. But then there are a number of other factors that we have that run in the background that help support those front-facing activities. But generally speaking, it rests with all of us to manage the phishing or social engineering attacks as the first step.
Any other questions from trustees? Trustee Dennis, go ahead.
Thank you so much. So I know in indicator six point one point two, we do address information systems internally, so our internal information systems. But I'm wondering about consideration for any external partners that we might have that might be holding information related to our staff and students. We know that, you know, fairly recently, there was a breach-through power school. I mean, that's been in the media. So we know that that there's been a challenge there. But I'm just wondering, I guess, a little bit more about our external partners and what we might be doing to also protect that information.
So through the chair. So with regard to sort of external providers of software or applications to the CBE, the protections that are available to the CBE are largely through the contract mechanism that we would have with those entities. So if we're looking for some application, we would go out with a request for proposal. In our request for proposal, we would make it very explicit what our expectations are around data privacy, where data is going to be resident, those kinds of things. And then when the contract is agreed, those provisions are built into the contract that allow us then to, or take comfort that our service providers are meeting our expectations.
Through the chair, what I would also add is that we require privacy impact assessments on a large number of the contracts that we enter into where CBE data or CBE student data is involved.
Thank you. Trustees, any additional questions? All right. We now come to the point where trustees are asked to identify their intentions to bring forward any motions related to compliance with Operational Expectation Six, Asset Protection. Any trustees who wish to bring forward a motion regarding exceptions to finding the evidence to be compliant or a motion of commendation for exceptional performance in a particular area should provide the Corporate Secretary and all trustees with proposed motions by noon Thursday, April seventeenth, 2025. If there are no exceptions or commendations, then this item will be placed on the consent agenda for the April twenty-second, 2025 board meeting. With the motion that the Board of Trustees approves that the Chief Superintendent is in compliance with provisions of OE six, Asset Protection. And with that, we will just take a short 10-minute recess and then reconvene. We will reconvene the meeting. Next on our agenda is item seven point one, Budget Assumption Report. Chief Superintendent Pittman, would you please introduce the report?
Thank you, Chair Boulder and trustees. We present for your information the 2025-26 Budget Assumptions Report. The CBE appreciates that the overall provincial budget for public education has increased from last year. By government's calculation, year-over-year education funding is up by four point five percent. For the CBE, that means an additional fifty-five million dollars, taking total Alberta education funding to the CBE to one point four four two billion. In addition to increased funding, government has implemented a new funding framework designed to better support a growing board like the CBE. And we appreciate that the government listened to our feedback and adjusted the framework. With the additional funding CBE will receive, we will continue to make the best decisions for students and staff while aligning program supports and services offered with overall funding. It's important to note, prudence and prioritization guide the development of our 2025-26 budget. Our goal in planning is to maximize the impact of every dollar, ultimately for student success. And this is no small decision-making process. Our budget reality is also impacted by historic and significant enrollment growth and the management of finite learning spaces, which will continue. While government's announcement of new schools is welcome news, we will must continue to manage existing learning spaces across our over two hundred fifty schools until these new schools are built. I'll now turn it over to Superintendent Grundy to provide some more additional elaboration on the Budget Assumptions Report.
Thank you, Chief Pittman, and through the chair to trustees. As the chief said, presented for your information today is the 2025-2026 Budget Assumptions Report. The Budget Assumptions Report, or BAR, is established as an expectation under Operational Expectation Five, Financial Planning. The BAR is a high-level directional document intended to provide you, as the governors of the CBE, with information on the key factors, considerations and assumptions that will be incorporated into the CBE's 2025-26 budget. As I mentioned, the BAR is presented for information. No decisions are required of you currently. As you contemplate the BAR, the CBE has received the 2025-26 Funding Profile from Alberta Education. That profile, attached to the report before you, sets out the amount of funding to be received from Alberta Education for the 25-26 school year. Also, the CBE has received the Alberta Education Funding Manual for the 25-26 school year, and we are currently working through it to confirm our understanding of the terms and conditions of the various grants included in the funding profile. That said, the overall amount of funding set out in the funding profile aligns with the CBE's assumptions in terms of overall amount. Specific grant amounts may vary from the CBE's preliminary assumptions, but overall, the revenue amount is consistent with assumptions. As the chief mentioned, overall funding for the CBE is up by fifty-five million dollars. This is approximately three percent in the face of enrollment growth projected to increase by two point six percent. As we have also discussed previously in this forum, in addition to enrollment growth, the CBE is subject to a growing proportion of students with complexity, an increase in the overall complexity of the students that we serve, the accumulating impact of inflation on purchased goods and services, and an increase in the average cost of labor across all employment categories. That means that while funding is up by three percent year-over-year, the CBE's costs are up by an equivalent amount. As a result, and as the chief indicated, budgeting requires both prudence and prioritization. That said, prudence and prioritization will allow for the Resource Allocation Method, or RAM, for the 2025-26 school year to be the biggest RAM in CBE history. The RAM is the mechanism through which the CBE deploys financial resources to all schools. We anticipate that the 25-26 RAM will be one billion one hundred nineteen million dollars, and that will be spread across our two hundred and fifty-plus schools. Schools will receive their RAM allocations on April tenth, so two days hence. This date ensures that schools have sufficient time to develop comprehensive spending plans to meet the needs of the students that they support. Per-student funding in the RAM will increase when compared to the per-student funding included in the current school year's RAM. Having said that, schools are very dynamic, and a school's overall RAM allocation is based on several factors related to the learning needs of the students that it serves. The CBE also expects to adjust programs, services and supports for both English as an additional language students and for students with complexity. This is a prioritization process within our fixed and finite financial resources. That prioritization will see an increased number of system classes and the targeted deployment of specialized expertise where and when necessary. That said, the CBE will also ensure that programs, services and supports align with the overall level of funding provided by Alberta Education. As a result, the CBE is working towards a budget that is balanced between total expenditures and total funding. That is the prudent thing to do. As it relates to fees, we will ensure that they always reflect only actual direct costs. We are currently reviewing our current fee structure to ensure that it reflects this financial context. Nevertheless, we will have measures in place to ensure that no student is denied access to their public education by an inability to pay a fee. While your administration has taken a prudent approach, there are factors that are difficult to predict with certainty. Accordingly, CBE administration is and will closely monitor the outcome of collective bargaining currently in process, enrollment trends over the remainder of this school year and into the next, the results of ongoing geopolitical uncertainty that is impacting pricing and the value of the Canadian dollar, and legislative and legal changes and developments that may impact programs and costs. To ensure the CBE continues to have a level of financial flexibility in the face of uncertainty, the CBE is taking the prudent step of setting aside one-half of one percent of total spending to increase the CBE's accumulated surplus from operation. The CBE will continue this approach over the next two to three budget cycles to ensure an appropriate level of financial flexibility that allows us to address any uncertainty. While prudence and prioritization are important, it is the CBE's values that set the course. Students come first, learning is our central purpose, and public education serves the common good. We are happy to take your questions at this time.
Thank you very much. Trustees, comments or questions on the report? Trustee Bukidinovich?
The classroom complexity, the increasing classroom complexity is really on my mind. And on page seven of thirteen, I read a statement in this report that says, "Growth in funding for students with special needs continues to lag the actual costs necessary to meet the needs." And in previous public meetings, we've learned that the Classroom Complexity Grant for the provincial government doesn't cover one hundred percent of the supports and services that the CBE offers to students with complex needs. So I could just use a reminder, what is the delta? And how does the CBE cover the cost of this delta? And to delve deeper into this topic, in March, the provincial government announced that classroom complexity funding will increase by twenty percent. So I'm wondering, what does the twenty percent increase amount to in terms of the dollar value? What like, what is the CBE actually getting? And I'm curious how close this twenty percent increase will come to bridging the delta.
Through the chair. Many questions in the question, so I'll start with perhaps a bit of context. So the provincial government's funding allocation framework is just that. It is a means to deploy the provincial government's public education budget to school jurisdictions. And they do that through a number of individual grant lines. It is easy, and perhaps it seems logical, that you would look at a specific grant line and say, you know, if there's ten million dollars for a thing, then we should be, it should cost us ten million dollars to do that thing, and there's the money. The reality is quite different. The reality is that the funding allocation framework provides each school jurisdiction with a bucket or a portfolio or envelope of funds. And then it's up to local administration, supported by their Board of Trustees, to make the best decisions in the interests of all students and try and meet their learning needs within that envelope of funds. So I'll start there. Having said that, for the 23-24 school year, so the last school year for which we have full information, the difference between the amount of the grants that were identified for students with complexity versus what the CBE actually spent on those same students was about forty million dollars. So to do that, we would then look to other grant lines and the prioritization of the learning needs of all of those students to fund that difference between the strict grant line and the amount that's necessary to provide the necessary services. You also asked about the Classroom Complexity Grant and the twenty percent increase. For the CBE, that increase is approximately one point six million dollars. So certainly helpful, but certainly not something that's going to cover the entirety of the difference between what the specific grant lines say and what it costs us to deliver the services. I think I covered off all the questions.
Thank you, Superintendent Grundy. Trustee Dennis, go ahead. Trustee Dennis, go ahead.
Thank you, Chair. So I guess maybe it's a bit of a follow-up to the question from Trustee Bukedinovich, but I'm wondering a little bit about, we say that we have 18% or 26,000 students that have special learning needs. And just for, I guess, maximum clarity, you know, what are some of the special learning needs that we are capturing within that, within that 18%? And I believe, you know, we've heard from Superintendent Grundy around what adjustments or investments are being proposed in order to meet the growing need, but just for additional clarity on what special learnings are being captured within that 18%?
Through the Chair, thank you. And so, special education categories that are captured within that 18% include a broad range of learning conditions and diagnosis. That includes students who have been identified as having gifted or enrichment requirements, students with learning disabilities, those with a medical diagnosis, those with mental health diagnosis, or developmental disability or communication challenges. And so all of those are representative within the Alberta Education Special Education Codes and reflect those 26,000 students.
Thank you, Chair. May I ask a quick follow-up on that?
Go ahead.
Thank you so much. And so just to confirm, so those various learning needs that you've mentioned there, we manage those within our, you know, regular classrooms, but also in unique settings and also within specialized programs within schools, is that correct?
Through the Chair, yes, that's correct. We have regular programming, inclusive education environments where learning needs are met through a continuum of supports and services, and those students that require additional supports above and beyond that are supported through school learning teams, aerial learning teams, as well as additional supports in terms of specialized classes that exist within a community school or are unique settings.
Thank you. Trustee Bukedinovich, and then Trustee Hack.
Yes, continuing along this, and in keeping with our value that the first placement option for educating students with special education needs begins in inclusive settings within community schools. But of course, as we know, supporting students with complex needs is not based on a one-size-fits-all model, so that's why we do offer a continuum of supports and services. And I wanted to zero in on those, narrow in on those, the students who are supported in specialized classes or unique setting spots. How many specialized classes or unique setting spots were available in the 2018-2019 school year? Just because I see that comparison year a few times in this report. How many do we anticipate, do we anticipate being able to offer in the 2025-26 school year? Or if we don't yet know that answer, how many were we able to offer in the 2024-25 school year? And I'm also wondering, did the percentage increase in available spots in specialized classrooms located within regular schools or in unique setting schools, did the percentage increase in the available spots line up with the percentage increase with the need during this period? And my final question is, how many additional specialized classes or unique setting spots would the CBE like to be able to offer to meet the needs of our students for the 2025-26 school year if we were to receive the funding to do so?
Thank you. Through the Chair. And so I've noted four questions, and I may come back to you to make sure that I capture all of your comments. And so for the 2018-2019 year, there were 3,228 spaces available in our specialized programs and unique settings. In the 2025-26 year, we anticipate that that number will have grown to 3,566 spaces. And so in terms of did that keep pace, what it did is be able to maintain this consistent level of service over that period of time. And so those numbers grew in relationship to our population growth, not our overall population growth, but the number of increased enrollment for students with an identified Alberta Education Special Education Code. And so that represents, in the upcoming year, we are adding an additional 11 classes for specialized programming programs, and that reflects an over and above this year, an additional 150 spaces available to meet students who require a unique setting or a specialized program. And in terms of future needs, we certainly look to constantly monitoring to see what level of need we are required and what we're able to accommodate in the funding envelope that we receive from government. Thank you.
Trustee Hack, go ahead.
Thank you. I'm just looking at our cover report, I'm looking at page 2 of 2. So it says in there that "We expect the ratio of students to school-based staff to increase modestly, and services and supports to students will not increase at the rate equal to the growth in student enrollment." So I'm just trying to understand that. So my understanding, and correct me in any place that I'm missing or need correction in, is that CBE has more students every year, that the cost of paying staff is increasing, the price of goods and services are going up because of inflation and tariffs were mentioned. Does this mean that even though CBE's budget is getting bigger this year, multi-millions, we won't be able to provide the same level of service or have as many staff members in the ratio to the number of students that CBE serves that we did last year? Is this a correct assumption based on what that statement says?
So through the Chair. So much of what you said is accurate. I'll go back to the year-over-year increase in funding from Alberta Education is 3%. The projected level of enrollment growth is 2.6%. So there is a little bit of room in that. But as you indicated, we also have the accumulating effect of inflation over time, so a dollar today does not purchase as much as it did yesterday or a year ago. And similarly, we're also seeing the cost of labor increase over time. So even if the amount of funding from Alberta Education exceeds the amount of enrollment, there will be pressure upon the CBE. For the 2025-26 school year, we anticipate a very modest impact on that. So within the RAM, the individual RAM rates for schools by division is up approximately nine-tenths of 1%. If we had our way, we would have seen a 1% increase in those rates to absolutely maintain status quo levels of staffing or the ratio of students to staff. So there will be some impact there. Having said that, when the RAMs roll out to the schools on Thursday, each school will look at that, they'll look at their context, they'll look at their staffing levels, they'll look at input from their communities and make some decisions. And I would expect that some schools will be very much able to maintain staffing levels, depending on their student population and how it changes, and other ones will have to make either increases or decreases depending on their unique circumstance, so.
Thank you. Trustee May?
Thank you. As the RAM gets rolled out to school, I'm wondering what guides principals in their decisions and how are parents and guardians involved?
Through the Chair. So much like technology, security, this is about layers as well. So when we roll out the Resource Allocation Method, there is a methodology within the RAM that provides guidance to school-based decision-makers around how they need to deploy those dollars. So for example, just an easy one would be, the RAM expects that there will be a principal in a school, and so they will make a decision to make sure there's a principal. And so that goes through the RAM. Second, the part, the RAM process involves bringing the school principal and whatever supports the school principal may have in their building, together with the education director, a representative from finance, and a representative from human resources. And they will go through the unique characteristics of that school and assist the principal in making appropriate decisions to address the learning needs of all of the students that will be in the building. One of the things, of course, that the principal will bring to that conversation is the sum total of the conversations that they've had with their school community over that preceding year. So one little example of that would be, you know, what's the community's perspective on perhaps split classes? And so they'll take that into consideration, and when they're doing their RAM planning, they'll sort of try and incorporate that to the extent possible in their decision-making.
Thank you. Trustee Close?
Thank you. I just wanted to follow up on Trustee Hack's line of questioning around the ratio of students to school-based staff increasing modestly, and it's, my question's based more on the assumption related to revenues and our process of collective bargaining, ongoing bargaining, and agreements. So I know that in past years, ATA collective agreements, or we have a line item. Is that assumed in our, in our revenue right now? Or could we, in the future, see a change in whether it's modestly increasing the ratio of students to school-based staff?
Through the Chair. So if we're speaking specifically about the ATA, yes, right now, there is a grant within the overall profile for the CBE that sets out an amount of money to address the increased cost of what's anticipated to be a settlement at some point in the not-too-distant future. It's not unusual for that grant amount to be adjusted in the fall, once more specific information is known around the number of staff that were hired under the ATA collective agreement and what the ultimate settlement is. But I'm not aware of anything that mandates or requires that adjustment later, but it has been a fairly common practice. If we're talking about non-ATA agreements, there is no specific line item in the funding profile for non-ATA collective agreements. So part of the art of budgeting is to make some assumptions around what those settlements would look like, and if those settlements vary from those assumptions, then there's something that CBE administration will need to monitor, which is what I referenced in my introductory comments. That's one of the things that we'll look at, is how those collective agreements come in, and I believe there's still two or three outstanding for the CBE, and so we're monitoring that very closely. We've made certain assumptions in the budget, and hopefully those align. If they don't, we'll have to figure out how we make that, close a gap, or what we do with any excess resources we may have if we over-assumed.
Trustee Bukedinovich?
On page 3 of 13, I read that one-third of our schools are operating at or above 100% utilization, but the Provincial Government considers 85% to be full utilization, and above 85%, our schools get squished. We're using gym stages, hallway spaces, squished. So I would like to know what percentage or proportion of CBE schools are at or above full utilization, meaning at or above 85%?
Through the Chair. We currently have 73.5% or 175 CBE schools operating at or above 85%. And that, for comparison, is up from September of this current year, where we were at 71.8% or 171 schools operating at or above 85%. So already an increase just over this school year.
Thank you. I have a question on page 11 of 13 of this report about inflation and foreign exchange, which was alluded to Superintendent Grundy in your opening comments, and they are indicated in RED for likelihood and consequence. So this will put pressure on system, on fixed system administration funding, where we know we're already exceptionally prudent and expend less than 3% of the allowable amount for administrative costs. So given the recent world events that we're undergoing, it would seem fair to suggest that this RED designation is accurate and very well will have an effect. So my question is, how significant an impact or what will this look like in this area and what consequences might there be?
Through the Chair, to the Chair. Unfortunately, I did not bring my crystal ball with me. What I could tell you is that approximately one-third of the CBE's overall budget is invested in goods and services. We do our best to drive out the best deal possible when we purchase goods and services, and certainly you're aware of the Provincial Government announcement that there's a desire that public sector entities explore opportunities to bring purchasing back into Canada if at all possible. So, you know, maybe we purchased desks and chairs from foreign jurisdictions that are somewhat south of us at some point in time, and now we would look at seeing if we could source those from Canada. So what's the ultimate impact of that? That's really hard to say. It depends on how much we can find in Canada, and it also depends upon what other things may evolve over the next little while. So once again, one of the reasons why in my introductory notes, that's one of the things that we're going to be monitoring closely and why we identified it as a risk in RED in the, in the, in the risk register in the document. So I don't, I can't give you a dollar number, but it is something that we're keeping our eye on. Thank you.
Thank you for that.
Trustee Hack, go ahead.
A little bit off that topic. I'm going to move us to page 8 of 13. I'm looking at the third bullet that discusses an allocation of one-half of 1%, so small percentage, of expenditures towards increasing accumulated surplus from operating to support additional operational flexibility. Can you just discuss why this is necessary from a fiscal point of view? And if we were to move it to supporting operations next year through the RAM, what noticeable difference would it make, if any, to families?
Through the Chair. So every accountant gets to have their moment, and the accumulated surplus from operations is ours. So a little bit of background and context, the CBE over the last, well, almost as long as I've been here, has had a, what, a guide that says we need to maximize the amount of funding available to support teaching and learning in the classroom. So during your tenure as the Board of Trustees for the CBE, you'll know that we talked about the board, the budget being essentially balanced if we were plus or minus half a percent of zero, being fully balanced. Of course, that period of time also included the COVID global pandemic, and then some enrollment variances. So we saw enrollment come down by unanticipated amounts through COVID and then spike back up after COVID by unanticipated amounts, which means that in those years, we deployed slightly more resources than we received from the Provincial Government, and over time, we brought our accumulated surplus from operations down. We're now at a point where the level of our accumulated surplus from operations is negatively impacting our ability to have flexibility in the face of uncertainty. So the plan that was presented when we provided this Board of Trustees with the audited financial statements for the prior school year was that we would set aside half a percent of total expenditures over a two-to-three-year period to increase our accumulated surplus from operations and provide us with additional flexibility. Now to your specific question, if we took that half a percent and invested it in the RAM, well, first, we have an accumulated surplus from operations of $1.5 million, and half a percent is approximately eight. So we would immediately be in a situation where our accumulated surplus is actually an accumulated deficit, which means we get a nice letter from the Provincial Government saying that we have to develop a plan to get us back to an accumulated surplus from operations. And to achieve that, we would immediately have to go to the RAM, likely, and reduce the expenditures there to create a balanced budget that's positive and start to build that accumulated surplus from operations. The half percent amount was selected because it was felt that it wasn't enough to materially impact on the RAM. So as I indicated previously, the funding rate in the RAM is nine-tenths of 1%. Ideally, it would have been 1%. So that one-tenth of 1% is the difference we're talking about. So that one-tenth of 1% is the difference we're talking about. And given the range of factors that influence a school, we feel relatively confident that the ratios won't change dramatically, but they might slightly in a increasing direction, so increasing number of students per school-based staff, but modestly, perhaps in some unique circumstance.
Trustee Bukidinovich?
Carrying on, along on this train of thought, on page 5 of 13, I read that students enrolled after September 30th do not receive funding in that school year. Then again, page 6 of 13 talks about CBE's operating reserves being 1.9% of prior year total expenditures of the second quarter of 2024-25. And Alberta Education requires school boards to maintain operating reserves between 1% and 6%. So that means that at 1.9%, we are right at the line. So I'm wondering, would the CBE even be able to use the 0.9% of prior year total expenditures to pay for the education costs for students enrolled after the September 30th, 2025 cutoff date? Or we're trying to draw on operating reserves for this? Would that put us dangerously close to falling below the provincial government's mandated 1% minimum floor? So that's, that's my question. Can we even access that money without falling below the, the minimum mandated floor? And my second question is that if we can't reach into operating reserves to pay for students who enroll after September 30th, then how would we cover, who will pay for the education costs of, of what I assume are the hundreds of students we expect to enroll after the September 30th, 2025 cutoff date?
Through the Chair. So a couple of things. First, I would start, it wasn't your question, but it was part of the, the lead-up to the question. I'm sure Alberta Education would tell us that the amount of funding that we received in our funding profile is to meet the needs of all students in the 25-26 school year, irrespective of when they come in our door. So they would argue that we are funded for all of those students. Perhaps it's more accurate to say we don't receive any additional funding over what's in the profile for students that come in after September count date. So start there. The accumulated surplus from operations includes the CBE's operating reserve. So while government does have a mandate that says school boards must have at least 1% operating reserves, that's included in our accumulated surplus from operations. So we meet that test, and you have to have an accumulated surplus from operations. We meet that test. However, the value of our accumulated surplus from operations is $1.5 million currently, which is the amount of operating reserve that we could access without getting the nice letter from the ministry saying, we need a plan to get you back to, you know, $1 positive. So it does impact our ability to use operating reserves to fund students that come in after this September count date. So where does the money come from? So even if there are hundreds of additional students that come into the system, we also have 251 schools. So if by some magic, one student showed up in each and every one of those 251 schools, there's probably not a significant impact. They would be slotted into an existing classroom and life would continue. Where we can have a problem is if 10, 15, or more students show up at a specific school, that may require them to open up an additional classroom, for example, or two. So in that case, what we have within the entirety of the RAM mechanism is a criteria-based response fund. So a, an amount of funding that's available to address emerging, emergent needs that cannot be predicted or addressed through a funding framework, which is what the RAM is. So there's a source of, of funding there that can help to address those kinds of things. There's also other aspects within the RAM that perhaps could be reprioritized, depending on how many students are coming in after that September 30th count date, that would allow us to ensure that they're getting the public education they deserve. And then finally, we could look across the CBE in the spirit of prudence and prioritization to say, maybe we deprioritize some things in other areas to free up the funds to support students and their learning in schools in other areas. So those are kind of the mechanisms we have available to us at this point in time.
Thank you, trustees. Any other comments or questions on the report?
I just want to make a comment, a couple of comments. One is, I really appreciate this report, and I, and I'm coming to appreciate the timing of it as far as the, doing the building blocks for building a budget that we have to approve by the end of May, but also the, the spring staffing, that, that schools need this, this information in order to, to staff schools. I also really appreciated the comments from our chief around prudence and prioritization. I think we probably should all learn those to, to keep using, because we are maximizing the impact of, of every dollar. But to get a little bit political for a second, you know, as trustees, we've been advocating for the last year or so around the importance of, of increasing base funding for provincial education. Otherwise, class sizes will continue to grow and, and students may not have what they need to learn. And we finally actually came out with a number, and we talked about how we'd like to see an additional $1 billion injected into public education in Alberta today, because we, we anticipated that we would receive about $180 million at that time, under the current, like the existing, the previous funding framework. And, and so what we have witnessed, and I think we should be appreciative of the huge investment that the province has made in education, and that was referenced by our chief superintendent, because it is large numbers, like $9.9 billion for a provincial education budget during a deficit time is, is pretty huge. And so, but I do also want to point out that we've seen an increase of $400 million from year to year, and, and we would love to, not for us, provincially. And we, and, and that's nowhere near the billion that we would be asking for. And so that's just the context that I'm, I'm trying to provide. So, so we're not seeing a cut, but we're not really covering growth or inflation, and you're managing expectations really well with this, with this report, and we still have work to do. So progress has been made. I think the government has listened to concerns and, and challenges that we're facing, but I think when we see the budget assumption report, I have the confidence and the assurance that CBE is managing their funds, and I got to look it up, in the prudent, prioritized way in order to maximize dollars to students. So thank you very much for bringing this report, and, and I know our schools will do the best they can in allocating staffing, and we will continue to advocate so that we can further meet the needs of students.
Thank you, trustee Close. Trustees, any other comments or questions on this report? Seeing none, that brings us to the consent agenda of our meeting. There were no items pulled from consent. As such, all items will be deemed to be approved with the agenda. This concludes the public portion of today's agenda. The board has two land, three labor, and three strategic planning matters to deal with in private. I would like to thank all of you who joined us for the meeting today, and our next public board meeting is scheduled for Tuesday, April 22nd, 2025. This meeting's terminated.